Okay, it is seven o'clock. Welcome to the Monday, July seventeenth, regular meeting of the Ashtrula City Council. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Can we please stand for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today, and your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Holman?
Present.
Mrs. Mills?
Here.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Mr. Spielman?
Here.
Mr. Roskovicz? Mr. Timmanier?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Augustine?
Yeah.
Alright, may I have a motion to excuse Mr. Roskovicz from this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Crawford, a second by Ms. Mrs. Jane Haines De Giacomo. Sorry, it's a mouthful. I'm not used to this job. Um, any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, we will excuse Mr. Roskovicz by a six to zero vote. We have met the requirements for the sunshine law, and first up, we are doing a presentation of a resolution for Mr. Sal Jackson. We're going to have Mrs. Haines De Giacomo and Ms. Holman come up and present Mr. Jackson with his resolution. So Sal, if you'll come up here, please, we'll put you right in the spotlight. Oh yeah, you gotta come here so you could face everyone.
Hello, you know me, Rulie C. Holman, Councilor, Ward Three. I am delighted to present this resolution to Mr. Sal Jackson. Shortly after taking my oath as Councilor of Ward Three, I heard several people mention Sal Jackson's name and his involvement in our community, as well as being a real estate broker. Agent. Broker-to-be. He has been instrumental for many youth, sometimes the only reason they became involved in the neighborhood cleanup. Our youth needs role models such as Sal. Because of the relationships he's built, he provided a reason for many to get involved, to create pride in where we live, become knowledgeable about the history and current resources that exist in our neighborhood, including learning about our elders and what they have contributed to our city. When he looked around his own neighborhood, he started cleaning up himself, instead of waiting or calling on others to do it. Others watched him and joined in. His efforts grew into a community event and is now a city-county-wide event. He used his networks, social media contacts to connect with youth, middle-aged and elders to get involved. He crossed racial, gender, and age differences, and people came out to support him and his vision, which became our vision. After speaking with Al, I learned that he had challenges as a young man. But with prayer, faith, discipline, and hard work, he defied the stereotypes and he overcame them. He has a passion for giving back to others, volunteers in our schools, and is a trailblazer. We want to show our appreciation, recognize him for his efforts, his leadership, desire to empower others in a many way, in the many ways that he supports community engagement in the city of Ashtrula. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, and for you, we hope the best is yet to come.
This is a resolution honoring Sal Jackson for his continued service in support of the city of Ashtrula. Whereas it has come to the attention of the city council and these public officials of the city of Ashtrula, Ohio, that a special recognition is in order, and whereas Sal Jackson has been a resident of the city of Ashtrula's Ward Three for many years, and whereas he has always cared about his neighborhood and city with a great passion, and whereas he started picking up his neighborhood on a regular basis, inviting and encouraging others to join him along the way, and whereas over the years, he has empowered residents to take ownership of their neighborhoods and their actions by involving and welcoming all to participate in making our neighborhoods clean and inviting, so the city of Ashtrula may be a better place because of them. And whereas his service and support of the city of Ashtrula has evolved and led to a launch of the annual event of a city cleanup to flourish and reach many who thrive to make Ash to beautiful, gathering all those throughout Ashtrula County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council and these public officials of the city of Ashtrula, Ohio do hereby convey to Sal Jackson our heartfelt appreciation and commendation for his many years of dedication and service to the city of Ashtrula. Thank you for believing in Ashtrula.
I guess I just wanna say thank you to everybody. I wanna say thank you to the city council for taking this time out to recognize me, and I wanna say thank you to all the residents of Ashtrula that has helped support the vision of trying to make this a better place, and I could never do it without them. So, I appreciate you guys very much, and that's everybody in Ashtrula. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Sal. Any anyone that came to see Sal get his resolution, you guys are welcome to stay for the meeting, or you're more than welcome to leave, whatever you would like to do. If you leave, you won't hurt our feelings. Congratulations, Sal. That was well-earned.
Although Mike has promised that this will be a short meeting.
Try and make it short. So congratulations, Mr. Jackson. That's well-deserved and well-earned. And the city thanks you, for sure. Okay, moving along, and you guys are welcome to leave at any time if you want to. You don't have to leave now or later. Okay, so moving along, we have two sets of minutes that need approval. We have our public hearing from two weeks ago and our regular council meeting minutes. So, Ms. Bergen, please.
July third, twenty twenty-three, public hearing meeting to present the twenty twenty-four Ashtrula City tax budget was called to order at six P M. by Council President Roskovicz. Members present were Mr. Roskovicz, Mr. Spielman, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. Haines De Giacomo. Absent was Ms. Holman. Officers present were City Manager Timmanier, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bergen. July third, twenty twenty-three, regular council meeting was called to order at seven oh four P M. by Council President Roskovicz. Mrs. Mills offered the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present were Mr. Roskovicz, Mr. Spielman, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. Haines De Giacomo. Absent was Ms. Holman. Officers present were City Manager Timmanier, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bergen.
Thank you. May we have a motion to waive the reading of both sets of minutes in their entirety?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Haines De Giacomo, a second by Ms. Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very well, the the minutes will pass by a six to zero vote. Moving on to our administrative reports. Before we even get to the city manager, the city council has a request to make. We need, I would like a motion to request ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one oh nine, an ordinance approving additional paid vacation leave for the clerk of council. I would like a motion to add this request to our regular meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Haines De Giacomo, second by? Mrs. Mills. Any discussion on adding this to our agenda? Very well, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very well, we will add that to our regular meeting agenda by a six to zero vote. Moving along to the city manager, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few ordinances to request tonight. First, I'd like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Rocky Road Paving of Geneva, Ohio, for the purpose of road restoration per section of Bridge Street and Holbert Hill in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Funding for this expense will be taken from the Water Pollution Control Fund five oh three.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Vice President?
I am in charge. Yeah, sure.
I I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Ms. Holman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very well, we will add that to our agenda by a six to zero vote.
Uh, next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Cadence Care Network of Niles, Ohio, for rent of an office space here at four seven one seven Main Avenue in the amount not to exceed one thousand one hundred dollars per month in accordance with the lease agreement.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion?
Mr. Vice President, just a note on this. This is just a renewal of a lease, so this is a current tenant whose lease has expired, and this is just a renewal of that lease.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very well, we will add that to our agenda, or we will add, that's not going on our agenda tonight.
I don't believe it's on the agenda for tonight, no.
Alright, so we will add that to the next meeting's agenda by a six to zero vote.
Uh, and lastly, I'd like an ordinance to deem a two thousand thirteen Dodge Charger obsolete. This vehicle has been utilized in the municipal court. It's no longer drivable, so it will be scrapped, and any funds will be deposited into the municipal court fund.
Mr. Vice President acting as president? I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mrs. Mills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, we will add that by a six to zero vote as well.
And Mr. President, this is all I have for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Moving along to the city solicitor.
I have no report this week.
Very well, no report. Thank you very much. Finance Director, Mrs. Augustine?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, I I just wanted to make sure that I didn't say, "Mr. President." I am requesting an ordinance adopting the tax budget of the city of Ashtrula for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and submitting the same to the Ohio Budget Commission. The Ohio Revice Code Section fifty-seven oh five, uh, point twenty-eight requires every tax, uh, every taxing authority in the state to submit a tax budget for the following fiscal year to the county budget. And the finance officer has prepared and delivered to the council a proposed tax budget for the city of Ashtrula for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four. The said proposed tax budget has been available for the public inspection at locations in offices, open and easily accessible in the in the, uh, office of the finance director and the clerk counsel for ten days. And the council conducted a public hearing on said tax budget on July third, twenty twenty-three with public notice of the hearing by prior publication as required by law in on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. So therefore, we are requesting an ordinance adopting the tax budget.
Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion to add the requested tax budget to our agenda this evening?
I I I will make that motion.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Second.
Second by Ms. Holman. Is there any discussion on Mrs. Augustine's request? Okay, all in favor of adding it to the?
I would just like to thank Ms. Augustine. I know she's new here to the city, and she did a lot of work on this, and thank you for this great budget and balancing.
Yes, it's not, it's not an easy task, so thank you very much. Thank you, Jody. Um, is there any further discussion? Okay, um, so we had a motion by Mrs. Haines De Giacomo, a second by Mrs. Mills. And all in favor of adding?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, it was seconded by Ms. Holman. My apologies. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, we will add that to our agenda by a six to zero vote. Thank you, Mrs. Augustine. Clerk of Council, Mackenzie, do you have any report this evening?
I do not.
Thank you. Alright, committee reports. Community development, um, had a meeting, and we have a report from Mrs. Haines De Giacomo.
We did. So we had Amanda Wood from the Holden Arboretum that came in, and she spoke on the benefits of trees. And I'm I'm just gonna highlight, uh, trees improve air quality by producing oxygen and by cleaning the air by absorbing C O two. Trees promote beneficial water quality. Trees reduce stress on stormwater infrastructure by slowing the rate of water entering the storm system, which eases pressure on storm systems and pump stations and allows for fewer detention ponds needed. Trees moderate temperature by providing shade and reflecting heat. Trees boast property values by increasing the sale price because you are adding greenery to your space. Trees are good for businesses, as it has been shown that they boost occupancy rates, increase property values, provide a buffer for pedestrians, and people tend to be more attentive and slow down while walking and driving in an area with tree coverage. Trees are good for physical health. They're good for mental health. Trees support wildlife by offering wildlife a protective cover along with seeds, nuts, and fruits for consumption and a natural corridor for migrating wildlife. Trees create community. So what I was hoping for by having, um, this speaker I didn't get, and that was a way to fund more tree planting in Ashtrula City. But I'm working on that. Stay tuned, folks. It's coming. And then I just wanted to highlight the city manager's report, that new grills were installed at Walnut Beach, and there's also an ADA-accessible grill that swivels instead of lifts off so you can get closer to it. The mats for the beach are in, are in, and the guys are going to work on getting the land ready to roll the mats out at Walnut Beach, so it is an extension of the boardwalk. And Smithfield came in over the engineer's estimate. They thought they were going to be able to pick it apart and make it work. However, C D B G rules state that this has to be rebid. There was only one person who bid originally, and it was too high, so they will probably chop it up into three projects and put it out there. Is it out for bid now? No.
It's not out for bid yet, no.
Okay. And they're working on seeing if that's an option, so.
Thank you. Is there any questions regarding the community development report? Okay, thank you, Jane. Finance and personnel.
We will be having a meeting this Friday, uh, July twenty-first at eight thirty A M.
Thank you, Kim. Public Works?
Uh, we are going to cancel our July twenty-fourth meeting. We are scheduling it for August twenty-eighth, where we are hoping to have a work session with the data that is being processed by G P D group for the waste system.
Okay, thank you. Safety Forces, that's my committee. We're scheduled to meet July twenty-fourth, next Monday at eight forty-five. We're gonna meet upstairs in the Augie Police Conference Room. Um, we have Tim Settles. He's the Deputy Director of the Ashtrula County Emergency Management. He's gonna be at the meeting. Uh, he's gonna talk about the, our last regular meeting here, we had to talk about the water, the boil notification from Aqua and how some people weren't receiving it. But Tim Settles and the Emergency Management Office, they have a reverse nine-one-one where if you register for it, you should get all these alerts. So he's gonna speak to the committee meeting about that, or the committee about that. Planning Commission and Ashtrula Historic Preservation Commission, there's no report from those. Okay, so moving along to the presentation of legislation. Well, it's asking for public, does any? I'm gonna give you an overview on our, uh, our, um, resolution and ordinances for the night, then if anyone has any public comments or questions, we'll ask them. So we're gonna do, um, Resolution twenty twenty-three one oh seven, a resolution honoring Sal Jackson. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three one oh eight, an ordinance authorizing contract, a contract with Rocky Road Paving for the Holbert Avenue Road Restoration. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three one oh nine is an ordinance approving paid vacation leave for the clerk of council. Ordinance twenty twenty-three one ten is an ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-four tax budget. So if anyone in the public would like to have a question or comment on any of those, um, pieces of legislation, please come up now. Okay, see, no, no questions or communications regarding the legislation. We'll move on to the reading of the legislation. Mackenzie, please.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one oh seven, a resolution honoring Sal Jackson for his continued service to and support of the city of Ashtrula. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one oh eight, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars with Rocky Road Paving for the Holbert Avenue Road Restoration. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one oh nine, an ordinance approving additional paid vacation leave for the clerk of council. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one ten, an ordinance adopting the tax budget of the city of Ashtrula for the fiscal year beginning on January one, twenty twenty-four, and submitting the same to the Ashtrula County, Ohio Budget Commission.
Thank you. May we have a motion to dispose of the regular business legislation by consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a a motion by Ms. Holman, a second by Mrs. Haines De Giacomo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, we will, um, dispose of these, uh, pieces of legislation in consent agenda by a six to zero vote. May I have a motion to waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mrs. Haines De Giacomo. Any discussion? All in favor of waiving the reading?
Aye.
Alright. Anyone opposed? Alright, we will waive the reading by a six to zero vote. Oh, we had to have a roll call to waive the two readings.
We have to do a motion to waive the charter requirement.
Okay. Can I have a motion to waive the charter requirement of two readings?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mr. Crawford? Okay. All in favor of wa- waiving? Okay. So we're gonna do a roll call. I'm confused now. My apologies. Please, Mackenzie.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovicz? Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Alright, we will waive the charter requirements of two readings by a six to zero vote. May we have a roll call on the adoption, please?
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskovicz? Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
You didn't call me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Haines De Giacomo, you're on another page.
Are you, what's your vote?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we will adopt all four pieces of legislation by a six to zero vote. We got through it. Alright, uh, moving along to unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business?
I do.
Okay.
I'm I'm pretty sure I do.
Okay, Mrs. Foglio?
You know, every week, my my complaints seem to have a, uh, a genre. This week, it's animals. I I had, Mr. Manager, I'm sorry, I have to pick on you this week. I had complaints, and and I just wanted you to go over, uh, what we do. I had complaints of raccoons on Union Avenue. They're coming out of the, this, not the sewer, but the drain pipes. And, um, these, the the residents are trapping them, but of course, we're not picking them up. I I just think we need to go over what what we should do if you, if you have gophers, if you have, um, skunks or or raccoons. What is the city's policy as far as that goes?
So this particular individual that I think you're speaking of, we have been doing this for a long, long time. And it's come to the point where when you start putting out these traps, you just keep attracting the animals. So you're essentially, even though they're being trapped, feeding them. And raccoons, possums, things like that can smell things from miles and miles and miles away. So that is why they've continued to keep around this particular property, in our opinion. We do it as a courtesy. It is not, and and honestly, it's sometimes by a case-by-case basis. If somebody's near woods, it's always gonna happen. If it's kind of in the middle of a concentrated area and they're becoming a problem, or if they're rabid or something like that, that's a different issue that we will help handle. But I think I'm pretty sure I know who you're speaking of, but we've been there a long, long, long time. And it's because private trappers cost money, and so just call the city and they'll take care of it.
Right, but normally, the city doesn't, doesn't do that. That's a whole nother?
Correct. Unless, like I said, if it's a, unless it's a issue of a sick animal
Okay.
or it's causing a problem or, you know, beyond just being in its natural habitat.
Okay, okay. That's animal question number one. Animal question number two is another well-known property on Linden Avenue. I don't have to give you the address. I think you, both you and Cecilia both know. I got a call again this morning at eight thirty from neighbors. There's eight cats at this particular home. And, um, they've, they've called the animal control officer, and they've called the police, and they've been told that we don't take nuisance calls. The person, I I'm just looking her up right now that lives there. Um, she hasn't been sighted. The cats are just causing havoc with the neighbors. They're, they're in their mulch. They're pottying everywhere. They don't know what to do. I don't know what to tell them.
So these are stray cats, or they?
These are their cats.
Their cats. Well, they're only supposed to have two animals.
I know, I know.
So, um, when people say that they called and this is what they're told, we really would like for them to report that to us with a time and date because depending on where they call, especially if it is the non-emergency number or even the emergency number, it's all recorded, so we can go back and listen to that and make sure if, and take action if people are really being told something like that. We always investigate those kind of animal complaints. This is an issue whether they are just feral cats in the neighborhood that somebody's feeding or if they actually belong to the person, and we would have to determine that.
Okay, I will have.
But that particular house, I believe, is in court for other nuisance.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
It is. I've I've checked all that. Okay, so that's number, and then then I have a rooster call. Chickens in the city. We're not, no, there's no chickens in the city, right?
Chickens are allowed in the city. Roosters are not.
Oh, so there is chickens in the city. No kidding?
No hoofed animals.
No hoofed animals?
No hoofed animals either.
So we can have chickens in the city?
That's correct.
No way. I didn't know that.
It's hard to meet the requirement, though.
I didn't know that. I always say no chickens in the city, but no roosters.
No roosters.
Oh, well, there's a rooster on West Sixteenth Street and Ohio Avenue.
Do you have an address? We'll go pay the rooster a visit.
I'll get you that address, but yes, he's he's cock-a-doodle-doing at five thirty every morning.
We've had to remove some roosters before.
Okay, I will get you that address. Okay, so that's that. Now we go to Mr. Okay, I will get you that address. Okay, so that's that. Now we go to Mr., well, we go to the golf cart. Oh, oh, one more thing, the potholes. Potholes on Allen Avenue down by Carpenter that I reported you, they still aren't filled. If you're going towards Carpenter, it'd be on the left-hand side. If you're coming from, it'd be on the right-hand side.
Okay.
Okay, so now the golf cart, golf cart stories. So this, this is, I've been going from my house on Walnut to Mount Carmel Church this week, almost every day. And I've seen a golf cart. This is a man and a woman and two kids. On the golf cart, he's driving, she's riding, two kids are riding in the back. That's the first time I saw them. The second time I saw them, he was driving, she was holding an infant. And the kids were driving, or the kids were riding in the seat behind. I saw them twice that way. The third time, oh, it gets better. The third time, she's driving, holding the infant, and the kids are in the seat next to her. And then I saw them again, the man driving, the woman holding the infant, and the kids, and this time, my husband was in the car with me. I didn't have my camera. I was gonna, I was going to tra- trace them down and get a picture, but of course, lift bridges, you saw them, uh-huh? You know who it is, okay. The lift bridge is going up and down, and I'm stuck in traffic. I can't turn around to chase them. But, I mean, I've seen it every, every day this week. I saw them in different positions. She was driving with the infant. I mean, that's child endangerment, and I'm like, I'm turning around. I didn't have my camera. I couldn't take a picture. But we, it's, we gotta do something about the golf carts, and if you know who they are, we should. Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, I saw that. But when she was driving with the infant, that was like, that's child endangerment. I mean, well, it is, at any, at any point. But yeah, nobody wants to hear about the golf carts.
I would say on Woodman Avenue, there was a golf cart that I saw that the police had pulled over. Yay.
On Woodman, I mean, in the harbor, I mean, I, but they're now using him as vehicles because they're getting away with it. So it's like, I'd like to use a golf cart to go from my house to Mount Carmel Church. Yeah, I don't have to pay any insurance. I guess, yeah. We have to do something about it.
So as a reminder, golf carts are still not legal to drive around on the streets in the city of Ashibula, even if other people are doing it.
Right, especially not with a baby in your arms, or two kids in the front seat.
Anything else, Ms. Mrs. Foglio?
That was my rant for today.
So no golf carts, but chickens are allowed in the city?
No roosters.
No roosters. And the chickens, you, there is very strict requirements for where the chicken coop has to be located in regards to your property line and structure, so I mean, if you're really interested, I suppose you can contact Jim's office, and they could tell you the specifics of how you have to have chickens. As long as the chickens don't drive the golf cart, you're good.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
Mr. Manager, so what is the protocol for folks who are jeopardizing the safety of themselves and children?
Well, I mean, if, if somebody witnesses that, by all means, call the non-emergency number. I mean, we have to see it. As, as Ms. Haynes mentioned, Ms. Haynes De Jacomo mentioned, we, we can pull people over and ticket them for that. So, you know, we, we are out doing that. If we see golf carts, we will pull them over. But, you know, in a situation like that, by all means, give us a call, and we'll, if we can have somebody respond to that, we will.
Thank you.
I, I, I have a question. So I know when summer started, we did not have enough help for mowing other people's yards. Is that still true?
So we've gotten lucky. We do have somebody that is part-time doing that, but in that stretch, we also had the no rain for like almost thirty days, which really helped to keep the lawns from being mowed. But we have, we do have someone, and they've been keeping up. So if you have other ones to report, just let me know addresses.
Oh, no, I, I think I've already reported on. So my question is, can we? Can we increase the fines, like, it's always the same houses, honest to God. I, I know exactly where to drive in the neighborhoods, because it's exactly the same people who continue not to mow their lawns. Like, the first time, it's fifty dollars, the second time, a hundred, the third time, a thousand. I think it's gonna stop then, if you just, can, can we do that?
Well, I can tell you, it's four hundred and fifty dollars for us to show up the first time.
Oh, it is?
So, and I can tell you, of all the ones that we bill and send and then put on taxes, rarely do we see a penny of it. So we spend probably ten to fifteen, in some years, twenty thousand dollars, just mowing other people's property.
It's just a handful of people, but they're just very consistent.
It's more than a handful. I mean, there's probably a handful in your
In my ward, in my ward, it's a handful, but they're, it's, I know who they are, and they're consistent.
Usually when those are reported, or they're already, we just leave them on our list, and as we're doing our rounds, we just know to go back and cut them without even sending notice anymore.
Right. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I had a, I had a animal call, although I don't think this, this one wasn't bad. It was a question about the canine patrol dogs, and I didn't know much, so I reached out to Mr. Manager. So I don't know, I thought it'd be helpful. It was good information, because this person that lives on Dwight had a relative that donated some of the the vest for the canines, and so the person wasn't sure, and I did not know how things are funded for the canines. So, Mr. Manager, can you give us an update on that of, like, how many canines that we have? And, because it sounded like there was an outpouring from the community, which is, is a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Vice President, Ms. Mills, we, we've been very fortunate that several donations and several organizations have funded pretty much our canine unit. We currently have six canines, and through this pot that's been established over the years, you know, anytime that there's a need for our handlers, we're able to provide items that, that they would request. That doesn't necessarily come out of the city coffers, but comes out of this kind of donation area that has come in for the, specifically for the canines. If those donations weren't coming in, we would certainly provide those as a municipality. We've been fortunate that there's been so much support for the canines that that we haven't had to take much from the coffers. We do, however, have handler agreements with each one of our canine officers. So they are provided funds for the, for care of the animals at their home, off duty, after hours. We even have veterinary care that's mostly donated, and unless there's an issue where there's a severe injury or something to one of the canines, but most of their care is, is all donated to, by veterinary, veterinary clinics around the area. So, yeah, it's, it's not that we, we rely on donations to fund our canines, but we've been very fortunate that there's been a lot of support for those canines that we haven't had to use much of our general fund for it.
Thank you. That was good information. I didn't realize that, and I know we do have a lot of support for animals in our community, so.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Ms. Mills, I talked to this same individual, and I think maybe the question was, the vests that were donated aren't being worn by the canines? Are, are, and I'm not sure what kind of vests he was talking about. Some kind of animal vests, or that they donated for the canines to wear, aren't being worn?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
I talked to him on Saturday.
Chief Stell's gonna come to the microphone and answer the question.
And then his second question was, are we paying the canine handlers for the food? Are, are we giving them money to feed the dogs? That was, those were his two questions.
Just turn the switch.
Alright, so as far as the food goes, in the past, that's been donated as well.
Okay.
I'd have to check. I haven't asked about the dog food. I believe it's still all donated.
Okay.
And then pertaining to the vests, they're, they're designed to be worn in a specific incident where you know there's gonna be a problem. You put it on the dog, and he goes, they're, they're heavy and they're hot. Dogs can't wear those all day long. It's just, it's not, it's completely impractical to do that. So, no, you don't see them on dogs off, unless we know we're going into a gun situation. They'll actually put it on the dog and then send them.
Okay.
If time permits, obviously, sometimes you can't.
Okay, so it, it's, it's a bulletproof vest that he was talking about?
Yes, that's what it is.
That's, that's what, yeah, that's kind of what I thought.
It's body armor for the dog, is what it is, so.
Okay, so they're not wearing it all the time? It would be just in a special situation?
They're not supposed to.
Okay.
Kevlar's hard.
It's like, we, if we, we try to get it on them if we can. That's, I know it's, it sounds like it's a little clunky way to do, but that's the only way you can do it.
Okay, alright, well, I, I, I see him. He's across the street from me all the time, so I will, I will get that information. And they are paying, or we get donations for food, and that's, that's pretty much what I told him.
We get a lot of donations for the canine program. We've got money in the bank. You can't say that about many things, but we have extra, a little bit of a surplus right now, so if we ever need to put a canine sitter, insert in a car, it's like seven thousand dollars. We don't have trouble paying for that, because we've got, with the FOP and with the city, we've got two different accounts from donations.
Okay, thank you.
We got thirty thousand last year, so.
Thank you. Thanks for that information.
Thank you. Anything else? Awesome.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I did have somebody call and thank the city for the guard rail on Valley View.
Oh, I haven't seen it yet.
Down towards
That's where I live, too.
Forty, down towards Forty-second.
Thanks for putting out the guard rail. That's awesome.
It was like you were gonna go around the corner, and you could like go right down into the Gulf, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's looking good. I know there's some other areas that are looking, you know, I, I don't know how they prevent that or stop that. You know, that kind of erosion futuristically, but.
Are you talking about along Valley View?
Yeah.
So the reason we put that guard rail there was there was a repair done to a storm outfall. And over, that was three or four years ago?
Yeah, a couple of years old, at least.
That has all settled, and when it settled, it took the curb with it. And so if you look on Valley View, there's probably a good, gosh, eight to ten to even some parts, twelve inches of curb, and that will prevent anybody from going there. So that's why, but that particular area, that curb had sunk, and that's why I asked them to put the guard rail up there.
And I did get a thank you for the whole, I don't know if it was an Aqua Repair Forty-second and State Road, they filled that in, because that was bad.
Yeah, by the corner store?
We're, we're doing all of our catch-up now on storm and sewer repairs to do the final top coats for our stuff. And I know Aqua and Dominion are also out there right now.
Okay, thank you, because we've got numerous calls on. There's digging everywhere, and folks have their tree lawns and their sidewalks, and I'm assuring them that they're going to be put back correctly.
So those are mostly your tree lawns and sidewalks are all, the utility companies and the sidewalks will be brand-new sidewalks when they're done, if they were taken out.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Okay, any new business? Oh, yes.
Before you go, I did wanna respond to Ms. Haynes De Jacomo's question about the lawns. If they get cited for a lawn care violation for having tall grass, the first time, it's a minor misdemeanor with a fine up to a hundred and fifty dollars. The second time, within two years, it's a misdemeanor of the fourth degree with a fine of up to two hundred and fifty dollars, and it can be a new violation for each day. So if the city tells them to cut the grass and they don't cut it for thirty days, that's technically thirty violations. So if you will make sure Ms. Church has those addresses, we'll get the inspectors to go take photos so that we can then not just clean them and handle it that way, but cite them into court as well.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Cooper. So if you've got long grass, cut it before you get fined. Is there any other unfinished business? Any new business?
Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
I would like to thank the city and ODOT for the grass cutting on Walnut Beaches Hill. My kids are fascinated by watching ODOT run that. They were like, it was pretty impressive to watch that, but yeah, that was really nice. That was the first time I was actually down there and watched it while they were actually cutting it, so thanks for having that cleaned up.
So that was a machine that I wanted until we priced it, and it's almost eighty thousand dollars.
I can't get one for my kids, and, yeah, no.
I believe they're supposed to try to do the hill by Point Park this week as well. So hopefully, we'll have that cleaned up for Win and Walleye.
Alright, moving along to Tell Us Something We Don't Know. Anybody have anything for this, this evening?
I do. I have a lot. So July twentieth seems to be the date of things that you are going to want to do. Starting with the Food Truck Thursday, which is gonna be at Zabak Williams Dukrow Funeral Home. You can see Mike Spielman in a speedo.
Baby, a speedo.
He's blushing.
I know, right. Now you called me out.
And dunk him. I, however, will be fully clothed. I will not be in a bathing suit, so don't worry, folks, but you can also dunk me. It's a dollar per chance. Then their Recovery Court is going to be in the evening at five o'clock at Lakeside Auditorium. I don't know if anyone here has gone. It is, you will have chills. It is a moving event of people that have truly turned around their lives, and then you have people that have come back after being cleaned for five or more years and just sharing their stories, and it's, it's really powerful. Bands on the Beach, July twentieth, and I don't remember the band, so I'm gonna put somebody up here at the dais on the spot. Who is the band on July?
Bobby Hayes and the H-two-O Band.
Yep. I, I don't have to, whatever I don't know, I know somebody who knows it. It's good. So those are the three announcements that I have.
Thank you. Ms. Holman, did you have something? Oh, I thought you were looking at me like anyone else have anything for Tell Us Something We Don't Know?
Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
I would like to wish my son a sixteenth happy birthday on next Monday, July twenty-fourth.
Oh, awesome.
He made me a dad sixteen years ago.
What's his name?
Donald Crawford.
Donald, well, happy birthday, Donald. Awesome. Anything else for Tell Us Something We Don't Know? Okay, now we're on to the public communications on general matters. So if anybody in the public would like to come up to the podium and address any concerns that they have, now's the time to do so. We just need your name, and if you, if you want to, you can give your address, but please, if you go up, turn on the microphone so we can hear you. Along the side.
Testing?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. First, I'd really like to thank our city manager, James Timmanier, and Sal for the cleanup of Ashibula, the beautification, and the continued development we're seeing in the community, particularly Bridge Street. And with growth comes problems, sometimes. Was really glad to hear about the patching, the paving that's going to take place on Bridge Street, very much needed. We're having some issues at the other end, the west end of Bridge Street, on the other side of the lift bridge. Every time it gets patched, it sinks, it cracks, and it's because of the increased traffic that we have, the construction mainly. We have huge trucks coming from Sidley, Penny Dock, with their gravel. They are not covering them. They're speeding, tearing down that street. They're tearing it up. So as soon as Phil, I believe, is it, no, Rob, with Rocky Road, he's very good at what he does, but he can't keep up with it. They, they're tearing it apart. So we, we talked about it, and because it's a historic area, we thought, why do we have to have the commercial trucks, the big gravel trucks, tearing over that bridge and across the other end? They have access to Route Eleven and Columbus. Why not say, we're not gonna do that anymore? I think it's just because of years of habit of taking off through Sidley and tearing up Bridge Street, they're, they continue to do that. So we thought, well, we'll bring it up to the city manager and the council and see if there's anything that can be done. I think that would save the city a lot of money, at least on that end of the road, and cleaning it up constantly, your city sweepers. I mean, it, it puts, it's taxing, and the city has to pay for it. You have the beach glass, festival that takes place, all that traffic, and again, the city sweepers have to come and clean it up. Of course, that's part of the prop, goes with the, the event, and then we'll be having the Walleye. And then, too, we have the new hotel that's coming up. My cousin Larry Lorello's building that, by the way. So anyway, I thought I'd plug them. And it's gonna be that much more traffic. So I think we also need to slow down the vehicles, the motorcycles that are coming through there. We have signs at the east end towards the businesses for twenty-five miles per hour, but after a certain restaurant or so, there's no more signs to slow them down. So after they see So after they see that last sign, they think, alright, tear down, okay? And it's getting dangerous. We have children, we have pets, just people out there and we, it's, it's getting really tough, so. Didn't know if it's something, we thought we'd run it by you, see what you, a sug- suggestion. But uh, I, I really wanted to thank you and Sal for what we see that's going on in our community. Probably don't hear enough good things, but get the complaints. So anyway, that's about, and I'm one of the owners in the townhouses and Carrie is also one of the owners in the townhouses. And Carrie, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, um, excuse me, what was your name? I'm sorry.
I don't wanna give it.
Oh, you don't wanna give it? Can you just have a, can we have a first name?
Linda.
Linda, thanks Linda.
Go ahead. Okay.
Carrie Lunghoffer. I live at fourteen thirty-nine Bridge Street. Um, I concur with pretty much everything she said. I'm new to the city. I lived in Sabreck almost all my adult life. Um, I love Bridge Street. I love Ashbula. I just have noticed, mainly for me, it's the dump trucks. It's, I'm, I work from home every day. I hear them every day. They shake my house. Um, beyond that, um, I just, like Linda said, it's all day from six thirty, seven in the morning until usually two or three o'clock. They're running up and down the street. Do they go the speed limit? I don't know. Everything looks fast when you're standing still. But I just feel like because it's a historical district, is there anything that's out there that says they really shouldn't be traveling that road? Um, beyond that, the, some of the road, they've patched it up right in front of my house. I think it was the Aqua that you were talking about. Then the other company came in and fixed it, but every time they'd hit that, it literally felt like an earthquake. So it's the dump trucks for me. I, can they go some other way? It's pretty, and the speed limit. More speed limit signs 'cause no one goes to the speed limit, ever. Maybe me, but. So that's really all I wanted to voice.
Thank, thank you for voicing your concerns and certainly the speed is a concern we hear very frequently here regarding Bridge Street. But uh, the construction vehicles on Jim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Um, so these are all things that we have thought of as well. Unfortunately, Bridge Street is a state route, so it's actually considered State Route five thirty-one. Um, so limiting it for the trucks, um, we can't do from what I understand. However, we have tried to work with Sidley, with um, Kinder Morgan, with all of the delivery companies to say, hey, look, could you please use Route eleven to Route twenty, um, stay on those state routes to avoid coming down Bridge Street? Um, unfortunately, some of the truckers that we get in town, they just like to speed out that way. Uh, if you ever do see a case and you're able to get a, even the badge off the side of the truck, what company it is that doesn't have a tarp or you see them dropping gravel, let us know. We do try to go after them and have them help out when we have to send the sweeper out. We've done that on several occasions. Um, bit of good news on uh, five thirty-one is actually in the city limits from about Norwood Drive on West Ninth Street, goes all the way to Lake Avenue, heads north on Lake Avenue to Bridge Street, all of Bridge Street, and then over East Sixth Street to um, Aruba, I think it is, just past Route eleven. That's all considered five thirty-one. ODOT wanted to wait until twenty twenty-eight to pave that, so we had a, we had a nice argument with them about that and we convinced them to do it next year. So we do have to make a down payment on the road at the beginning of next year, um, but they will do that entire surface in the summertime next year. So hopefully some of those dips and voids, they will do, um, we have to cover the cost of it, but if there's any um, uh, full-depth repairs that need to be done where it's not just grinding it off, we have to actually go down and stabilize base in some of those areas that it's dipped, um, they will, uh, they will do all of that. So all of those bumps will be smoothed out, hopefully calm that noise down. But yes, we do understand that being that, being a truck route, um, causes some issues as well, so. So we've, we've tried to do that. We, we um, we sometimes have the motorcycle down there, uh, so that kinda stays hidden and then gets people. Um, we've also done a partnership with the State Highway Patrol, uh, with their ways and measures where we've pulled over trucks just to do uh, DOT inspections and do weight inspections. That actually was a very good initiative for us. We caught quite a few people. Um, and you know, it's not an intentional thing, but just, it's not, you know, hey, we're trying to come after you today, but we know that some of these overloading is an issue so that, and it does wear and erodes, right, right? So we, we have done those initiatives with them and uh, we do intend on doing more of them, so.
One more question. The, the lift bridge itself, like cars are getting way bigger than they, at what point does that become one-way or at what point do we prohibit commercial trucks on, 'cause people don't fit?
One of the smartest things the city has done in its history was never taking possession of the lift bridge.
Hmm.
So that's an ODOT problem. So if they had to rebuild the bridge, good luck.
Okay, so, so we can, we can't do anything to the bridge?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
It does get, yes, yes.
Right, okay.
If you have a large truck coming with an SUV, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hairy, so.
Yeah, it gets, it gets hairy in there.
Okay. Well, that, thank you for your concerns. I mean, certainly we've, we've taken note of them and you know, we'll take the action that we can on it for sure.
And we will be doing more of that law enforcement and of the um, uh, the DOT inspections as well as summertime goes. We will look at signage down there as well, yep.
I will mention, I, I'm not sign a lot, I'm a former driver, I see a lot of this. Couple times every city, I like, I see a lot of city.
Good. Great.
Tha- thank you for voicing your concerns. Any, anything else? Okay, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come to the podium and address counsel? Okay, seeing no one, um, our next meeting will be Monday, August seventh at seven PM and we will adjourn. Have a great night.